Hello, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Workshop. Before we get started, I asked Mr. Johnson to call the roll.
Councilman Fugit.
Here.
Councilman Helsley.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Parker.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Here.
Councilwoman Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
And Councilman Thomas. Eight members present, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We'll catch up in the proper order now. Mr. Councilmember Thomas is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for everyone that's joining us in person and watching online. Today, we're going to have a workshop about the proposed local option sales tax increase. We have asked Mayor Cannon to join us, along with members of her staff. We have also asked Mr. Davis from the Election Commission to join us. I see Mr. Davis coming in now. So we'll make time for questions throughout the presentation. Mayor, welcome. I'll turn the mic over to you to guide us through the presentation. I encourage council members to ask questions as they come along, but also you can ask them at the end. So Mayor Cannon, welcome.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, members of council. It's nice to see you again. I feel like we've spent a lot of time together recently, and I appreciate all your hard work and dedication. Thank you for agreeing on relatively short notice to have this workshop. I look forward to the discussion. And feel free, we have about 15 slides to share. And so, just for some context, but if you have questions along the way, feel free to interject, and I'll rely on the Vice Mayor to call on you in the order in which you are lighting your lights. So, planning for the future. We'll just go right to the first slide. I wanted to first just start by providing some context, why I'm proposing this now, and why I think it's so important for you all to consider bringing this to the voters of Knoxville to decide. It's really about our future. This is, for most of you, the eighth budget that you've done. We just completed, thank you for your support, on Tuesday. And others, it's my sixth budget. Councilwoman Helsley, it's her second. So we all have a bit of experience under our belts, both in doing budgets, but also in receiving constituent requests. And some of those requests, we can handle right away, and some of those are things that we do not have the funds to do, given that we have a balanced budget. So this request is years in the making, because we are trying to meet our local needs, to plan for the future. When I first took office in 2020, we had put together a budget, and then we had to pivot quite dramatically to do a more status quo budget, because the pandemic hit, and we didn't know what the economy was going to bring our way. At that time, I know we were all very glad that previous councils and mayors had been careful stewards of city taxpayer dollars. So we didn't have to close the city for a day, we didn't have to lay anybody off, and there was no disruption to services. And that's really important. So this is about making sure we're good stewards and have a stable foundation for the next, the future councils, future mayors, and most importantly, just for the future of Knoxville. And as we are going through a time where there's some uncertainty on the global and national economic level, people have said, well, how can we move forward with something like this, given all these uncertainties? To me, it's more important than ever that we take local control over local projects to, so we have control over our own future. So that's the context of why we're doing this, and I'm looking forward to sharing a little bit more. So, next slide, please. This is a graph that just shows our current sales tax in Knoxville. The blue, right now, the sales tax is 9.25 percent. Seven percent of that, the vast majority goes to the state of Tennessee. And sometimes, you know, we have our delegation to sort of help us with how they dispose of that. And then the 2.25 percent is the current local option, that's the orange. And if the voter, if you all send it to the voters, and the voters approve, this is a half cent increase. So that little sliver of gray would be the amount that it's increased. There are some state laws that control state, local option sales tax. 2.75 is the maximum allowed by state law, and it only applies to the first 1,600 of any purchase. So if you're buying something that's cost more than 1,600, say, a car, the local option doesn't apply after that 1,600. So the most that it would increase on any single purchase is $8. That's what the half cent would increase on something that costs $20,000, or anything over 1,600. And unlike a property tax, which can be done by majority vote of city council, a sales tax has to go to city voters on the ballot. So that's what state law requires. This is one of my, I think, a very significant slide. Most of the counties across the state, including many of our nearby neighboring counties, have already gone to the maximum local option sales tax. And they did so years ago. And this, our neighbors in Granger County did it in 1994. And Blount County did it, they're the most recent one of the ones on this graph, and they did it in 2014. So for at least 10 years, all these surrounding counties have already been at the local option maximum allowed by state law. So if you end up shopping in Sevier County, or Anderson County, or Blount County, you are already contributing a little extra to the infrastructure needs of those communities. And we're just asking the city voters if they would be willing to ask the same of people who shop in Knoxville. Does Knox County have a role? The short answer is yes, they do. If you all choose to add this to, as a ballot referendum, then we would officially notify Knox County, and they would have up to 40 days to consider whether they want to bring it to a countywide referendum. If they do, then it would be a countywide referendum, and if they do not, it would just be citywide. And we can talk a little bit more about that right now, or we can wait till later if you have more questions. As you all know, I'm a huge supporter of our public schools, 10-year member of the Knox County Board of Education. I know many of you all share those same values. And I just want to make it very, very clear that this proposal will in no way diminish our contributions to Knox County public schools. Last year, we allocated $171 million to Knox County public schools, and that is 53 million more than the state minimum required. So the state requires that it be 50 percent, 50 percent, and we give another 22 percent beyond that, which is 53 million recurring dollars. So it's pretty significant, and I'm proud of that. And this local option half cent increase would not diminish that in any way.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Fugit has a question.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't get my light on fast enough. If it were to go countywide, then it would have to pass countywide before the city could get its increase. If it just is, that's, I'm assuming that, so that's the question I'm asking.
When and if the county chooses to bring this to county voters, it sort of usurps the city's only election. And it would go countywide, and if it passes, then we would get, we would get that bump, 50 percent of it, and then the other 50 percent would go to Knox County schools. If it passes only in the city, I mean, if it is only voted on by city residents.
Then just city voters.
And passes in the city, then we're able to retain 100 percent of that half cent increment.
And it would only apply to purchases made in the city limits?
Correct.
Okay.
Just a follow-up question on this topic, if we could go back.
The county role?
Yeah, thank you. If the county opts in, do they have the chance to amend the proposal? Or does it, is it kind of an accepted-as-it-is decision by the county?
I'm not sure of that. I think that, I do know that if it goes to a countywide referendum, even if it passes within the city limits, but fails overall, it's a, it either has to pass all the way up or down. So, do they, would they get to amend it? I think, I think not. We'll double-check.
Okay. So...
I'm not sure.
The scenario would be that the city, the city council passes it, puts it on the, decides to suggest to put it on the ballot, and the county says, actually, we want it to be 20 cents instead of 50. Is that...
I suppose, I mean, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, all right. They could do that? Okay.
They could do that, okay.
All right.
Apparently, they could do that, and that would supersede ours. I do think that some factors to consider is, one is history. Last time a city proposed this was 1988, and at that time, Mayor Ash went forward, and the county executive at the time, Dwight Kessel, declined to participate in 1988. It passed in the city, and shortly thereafter, the county said, wow, that's some money that we could use, too. So then they put it as a countywide referendum, and it passed a year or two later. Another thing, and Mr. Davis can confirm this, is there is no election in Knox County this year. There's only a city election. And so if they wanted to do it this year, they would have to pay to put on a special election.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Singh.
Thank you. I believe the estimate, we were thinking it was 47 million.
Correct.
That it could raise. If the county opted in, and then, do we have an estimate on what it would be if we had to give a portion towards the schools?
It would be half of that, 20, we would only get to keep 23 and a half million. And again, that 47 million is based on last full fiscal year's sales tax revenue. It can fluctuate. We hope it always, you know, is going up, but, you know, sales tax is dependent on purchasing. It's not as steady as property tax. But yeah, for, if it, if and when it goes to a countywide, that the voters approve across the county, we would retain only 50 percent, and the rest would go to Knox County schools.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Can you go back to the slide with the amounts and percentages that go to the schools?
Yeah.
Some of the numbers you were citing didn't match what was in the slide, so I didn't quite follow exactly what you're saying, so...
Okay, the total amount that we gave last year is 118 plus 53, I hope, is 171. That's what my notes say. So the total amount that was allocated is 72 cents, 72 percent. And, and then we get to retain 28 percent.
Okay. Oh, okay, I see. So, that pie, the blue and the orange.
The blue and the orange are both Knox County schools. I highlighted the orange to show that that's above and beyond the state minimum required.
What we're required. Okay. And the gray part is all of the local option that we keep to use for the city.
And that's the amount that we retained in FY '24.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you for the clarity.
Okay.
Councilman Roberto.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor, I appreciate you talking about 1988. Going back to that timeframe, when that was introduced, there were actually two budgets presented to city council, one with and one without the sales tax increase. That increase was for three-quarters of a cent. And the point I wanted to make, more specifically, looking back at that 1988 timeframe, was that the revenue generated was specifically allocated to projects. And those included, you know, paving 42 miles each year, which would be seven miles in each district. And at the time, we hadn't hired new police officers and firefighters in many years, and so it was, it was intended to make sure we hired, hired specific folks. So I bring that up, those specifics up, to just ask, and maybe you're going to get this later in the priorities list, but what I wanted to ask you about was, what specific priorities are you looking to address here? I know we've seen, you know, the 47 million dollars that's going to be generated, $10 million for parks, $5 million for deferred maintenance, and so on, which you've got up there now. Can you talk to us about specifics about what you're looking for there? What parks? What sidewalks? What traffic calming? What greenways? What facilities and maintenance? What are you planning on doing in addition to what we're already doing for affordable housing? So I think those, that specificity is going to be very helpful.
Yeah, I totally agree. And what I hope is that we can bring this to a level of specificity by district, where voters can go to the polls and say, instead of saying, instead of asking them to say yes to an increase in their sales tax, they're saying yes to an improvement in a ball field near their neighborhood. Or that they know they'll get more paved roads by district in their neighborhood. So we are working on a very specific plan, that'll be for five years, and that'll be specific by district. And I would like to meet with each of you to get your thoughts and feedback on, on the nature of that plan, because we have to balance things equitably by district, and we also want to make sure that there are things that are popular and that people want, and that are also feasible. I mean, sometimes people want things, and that would take the whole 47 million, for example. So I, these are the buckets, and we purposely didn't get specific yet, because we want to hear from you about what you think. And that can be something you talk about today, but also a one-on-one, especially, you know, district reps, but also at-large reps. We need to know what you think is compelling. But these buckets don't come out of thin air. You all have been in office long enough to know that everyone always wants our sidewalks to be in mint condition, and they want more sidewalks in every part of the city. Greenways, road paving, I mean, you know, people really like smooth roads, and they really like greenways. And we have some, the good news is that our district-level-specific plan will be informed not just by you, but by many years of collecting input from our constituents. We have a bike infrastructure plan. We have a sidewalk plan. We are in the process of collecting information about our parks' master plan. And the turnout for those, both the survey responses and people, and people responding to the online survey has been really good. And I think there's one question towards the end of that survey that says, would you be willing to pay more for park improvements? And would you be willing to pay, you know, $5 more, $10, whatever? And I think the answer was, the most popular answer was $25 or more, something like that. We're still compiling that. I think the survey's still up and live for another couple days. Is that right? Yeah. Anyhow, yeah, I think, anyhow, all that is to say is, you'll note that these buckets contain nothing. There's no new programs, and we're not hiring anybody new. These are all things that, we already pave a certain number of miles per district every year. And what I've asked the engineering department to do is say, if we, if this specific plan, when we get to the level of specificity, how many more miles of paving can we do per district per year? I don't have that today, the number of miles, but we will be very specific before you vote on first reading, about the number of miles paved, and the specific sidewalk projects, the specific park improvements, playground, ball field, also facilities and maintenance. Does this mean a new roof for a particular community center? It may. This is where we need to consolidate your input and finalize that draft plan and get it to you before you vote on first reading. So, and the affordable housing, again, I'm really, I mean, we should all take great pride in our efforts on that. We have a $50 million commitment. This $10 million would be above and beyond that. And as you know, it's not just 10 million to build one project. For every dollar the city taxpayers put in, we get $15 of private investment. So that kind of return on the investment has helped catalyze a major increase in the construction of new affordable housing in Knoxville. And yet, it's not enough, because we are growing. So I hear you. The number-one response I've gotten after unveiling this proposal last week is, this sounds good, but I need specifics. I can't get, I can't get people to vote for this unless they know it's going to do this thing that I care about in my neighborhood. So, I totally agree. I spoke to Victor Ash, too. He told me all about how he did it, and there's a lot of wisdom in that. And although I am glad we did our budget and passed it and didn't do two alternative budgets, that's a little confusing for me. So specificity, please come meet with me and my team, share your thoughts, and we'll get specific real fast.
Well, and that answers kind of my follow-up question, which was, you know, when should we expect the list of specific plans? And you just answered that.
Before you vote.
Before we vote. So that's really helpful. The other part I was going to ask you about was, you know, we, you're right, we just passed the budget, you know, the other day. So what, why do you think, and you mentioned, you know, the future and taking control of our local dollars, but, but why is this critical to do now? Like, why right now are we needing to do this?
Well, that's a good question. I think the answer is that this budget was yet another reminder that every year, my department heads come to me with this level of requests, plus constituents have this level of requests, but we have to pass a balanced budget. So when revenues are here and requests are here, then we fund it at the levels of available funding. But I asked my team, what could we do to address deferred maintenance and a growing needs? Not only are we growing as a city, we're about to cross 200,000 people. I mean, we were sort of real steady for decades, and then in the last 10 years, we've added at least 10,000 people. So that's a quick, that's a lot of growth, pretty fast. And that is in addition to the growth in the Knox County metro statistical area. The whole Knox County region is, is growing. And people from outside the city are coming here to, you know, get medical care, to work, to enjoy our parks and paved roads and other amenities. And so the wear and tear on our infrastructure is increasing, and so it's more important than ever that we meet that growing need before it becomes more and more expensive. We all know, having lived in an older home or any, any type of maintenance, the longer you wait to address the gutters, plumbing issue, whatever it is, waiting makes it more expensive, not less. So that's why I asked my team to come up with a solution where we could get ahead of things instead of falling behind.
Councilwoman Ryder.
Actually, I'm going to pass for right now.
Councilwoman Singh.
Thank you. My question is kind of the opposite of Councilwoman Roberto's. I think these are all useful things that a lot of constituents ask for. But I'm concerned about the uncertainty of these times and federal monies being cut for things that might be very necessary for us. How, how much flexibility would we have if there were different needs that were much more severe?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I mean, of course, people call 311, and they call you, and they call me to say they need these things. They also call and say, I need more mental health, I need access to affordable health care, I need help with food, or utilities, or, I mean, the needs are considerable. So these buckets are things that the city is responsible for, and they're, and that's why we did that. We, we do care very much about people's other needs that are outside of our purview. And so, you know, if, if there's a calamity of some kind, where the federal government stops funding big amounts of things, like Medicaid or Medicare, you know, those are things that we'll have to address as a community. And if, you know, similar, if there's another pandemic or a natural disaster, you know, we will have a five-year plan and be very specific on it, but if we had to pivot from that plan, we would be very transparent about that as well.
To pivot from this plan to...
Yeah, and we would, you know...
To fill in whatever other gaps are coming.
Right. We, I mean, trust is important. We can't do anything without the trust and, and of the people we're trying to serve. And so this is what the proposal is. These are the buckets. We don't have the specificity. But again, if some, just like when the pandemic hit, all of a sudden, we were helping for, you know, to subsidize feeding people who, mobile meal, you know, getting mobile meals out, and helping kids who usually got school lunches, school was closed. We, we did pivot, and, you know, people appreciated that, and they understood it. And so if something like that arises, we would certainly talk to council and the community about that.
Sounds good. This is a plan forward unless emergency.
Of course, yeah.
Well, maybe one more question, and then get back on track with the presentation. Councilwoman McKenzie.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor, thank you for being here today to go over these specifics with us. And so it sounds like my, my question may have been answered, but just, just for clarity, in the event that we were to see some catastrophic things happen from a federal perspective, and now we know that HUD's getting cut, there's some possibilities that, you know, we may see more people unfortunately become homeless, not able to afford to pay, would we be locked into these buckets? Or again, I just want to be clear, we could pivot, if this is passed, to be able to reallocate in those types of situations?
That's correct. The ballot language that you guys will be considering on June 10th and 24th will just be very clear, saying, yes, I will, you know, yes or no. I support a point, you know, half cent, I guess we have to say 0.75 or 0.5 increase to the local option sales tax, yes or no? And it won't say for these five buckets. So, so yes, there will be flexibility, should the needs arise.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Helsley and Fugit, can you...
If you're going to move on, I'll just, I'll hold mine till...
Okay, that's okay. Thank you. Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, let's, I think, just one thing before we move from this slide. I mean, we can, we will be very specific by district on, on specific proposed investments, but things like traffic calming, as you well know, we don't proceed with that unless the neighborhoods want it. Like, so that is something that, you know, we will have a bucket of money available, and then we'll, you know, have a process by which, you know, like we have had in the past, but we have put that on pause, because we don't have any funds to move forward with it right now. All right, moving on to the next slide. As you all know very well, we have a lot of community members who are struggling, and we wanted to mitigate the impact of this half-cent increase by carving out groceries. So my proposal would exclude groceries from this increase, and we would bring you a separate sort of trigger ordinance that you guys can approve at the same time that you consider this half-cent increase. You could consider and hopefully pass an ordinance that if the half-cent increase is approved by the voters, the sales tax would exclude groceries. Groceries are defined by the state of Tennessee, not by me, not by the city of Knoxville. It's an official state of Tennessee designation, and so we're not trying to redefine anything. We're just trying to make it easier for people to pay their bills. Speaking of which, let's go to the next slide, because, you know, sometimes people's first reaction to any kind of tax increase is, I don't want it, I don't like it, I already have, have a hard time. So, so please know that this would not affect a lot of things that people might not understand or otherwise. What are some things that people spend a lot of money on? Rent, property taxes, would not affect either of those at all. Bus fare, gas. Gas taxes and sales tax are totally separate. Local option sales tax does not affect the price of gas. Prescriptions, healthcare visits, your KUB bill would not be impacted in any way by the half-cent sales tax. And of course, we are going to affirmatively exempt groceries. The other thing I think is important is that some things that also are big family expenses that we wouldn't want to add to the burden is things like diapers and baby formula, not, would not be affected by this. They'd be exempted as well. Any questions? Okay. This is an important slide, I think, especially as we talk to our constituents about this. In the case of property tax, only people who own property in the city of Knoxville, and it is passed on to renters, I get that, only people who live in the city pay property tax. But sales tax is paid for by anyone who shops in Knoxville. And that includes nearby people who patronize our shops, because they live nearby, but outside the city limits. You know, say, Hall's, Powell, Karn's, Fairgate, Gibbs, wherever. It also includes our growing tourist and visitor industry, people who come here for sports and entertainment, ball games, to enjoy the theater and cultural amenities. We are a center of employment and retail shopping, and when people come to enjoy our parks and our streets and our other amenities, this is a way to help them share the burden of maintaining the infrastructures that they enjoy. So we believe that at least 50 percent of all sales tax revenue collected in the city of Knoxville is paid by people who do not reside in the city of Knoxville. And I got that from discussions with Bill Fox, emeritus professor of business at the University of Tennessee, and Bill Lyons, we all know Bill Lyons. And so that, to me, was an important message, because there's a lot of people who call Knoxville home, and this is one way for them to share with city residents in maintaining our quality of life. People also really want to know, what is the actual impact going to be? This graphic shows the household impact. Obviously, the impact is more the more you spend. So a household that spends, a household income up to $100,000, we think the... we think the average monthly impact would be $12. If you are a lower-income household, you spend less and the impact would be less. So the other thing, just before we go, go from that, is unlike property tax, you know, this is something that happens little by little. As you go shopping, you don't get a bill from it, for it. So it's, you know, a little different in that regard as well. So last, just, you know, this, we just thought we'd give a couple real-life examples of things everyday people buy. A school backpack for 16 bucks, the increase of this half-cent would be seven cents. A T-shirt, 13 cents. You see the other, other items. And just, just a note to re-emphasize, we put eggs up there because there's no increase to groceries. Cost of eggs has been a bit of a talking point for people. So we're not increasing the cost of eggs, bread, milk, all those essentials. Timeline, we're here today sharing more information and, and having a discussion with you all. We plan to bring you this ordinance to put on the ballot at your June meetings for first and second reading. And if you do let, decide to pass this and let the voters decide, it would be on the November ballot. And then if the voters approve it, it would go into effect March 1st. And I have been asked, you know, how, is that enough time to, you know, make this change for merchants? And, and the answer, the short answer is yes, it's actually plenty of time. Merchants have done this in all this, you know, many of the surrounding counties. And the state comptroller's office is very accustomed to doing changes like this. You know, when there's an occasional sales tax holiday, they do it for, you know, a long weekend or something. So we will do whatever we can, should it pass, to help merchants find, with any help they may need. And, yeah, that concludes our slideshow, and happy to field more questions. And if, if I can't answer them, there's, I have, you know, law director, financial CFO, Cheryl Ball, other people. Okay. Oh, yes. Cheryl is suggesting that I remind you and the public to, you can get all this information and more at KnoxvilleTN.gov slash localoption. And we've also welcomed questions from the public. Send an email to localoption@KnoxvilleTN.gov. And we will respond to every email, and then we'll also continue to add and refine. As we get more questions, we have one of the buttons on the webpages, FAQ. So we can, if we're, we're getting a lot of questions and from many people, or the same question from many people, we'll just go ahead and add that to the FAQ so everyone has that.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I open the floor for questions from council, just as a reminder, Chris Davis, the Executive Director of Knox County Elections is here. He has to leave at 5:00, so I would encourage you all to ask any questions you would have for him early and often. Councilwoman Fugit.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is more of a comment. As you were talking about, could you pivot and use it for something else? In an emergency, the city has reserves and the, and the city has other things, and we always pivot in an emergency. My concern is if we spend a lot of time talking about it doesn't necessarily have to be used for what we say the big buckets are, that can breach some trust with, with folks. So I, while I appreciate my colleagues' concern about an emergency, an emergency is an emergency. If we're going to say that we're spending this on things that are backlogged of, that everybody has been asking for, I mean, I'm sure someone out there can tell me this because we talk about it a lot. I don't expect the mayor to know the answer. I'm looking at you guys between the power, the brain trust back here. About how many miles of sidewalks are we able to do every year?
Mr. Brace?
So let's break sidewalks into existing facilities that are there that need to be repaired. And we have annual dollars allocated for repairing those. And that's under $1 million a year to repair sidewalks.
How much does it take to build a mile of sidewalk?
It's, it depends, but it's, there's a general rule of about $1 million a mile, and it depends on a lot of things. But I think the point is, we don't build new sidewalks. It's one of the number-one requests. We do integrate them into major infrastructure projects. So over in Mr. Vice Mayor Smith's district, right, when we're doing the Sevier Avenue streetscapes, the replacement of those sidewalks is integrated into that. But all of the sidewalk projects that are within the sidewalk plan, we really don't have consistent funding. They're onesie-twosies.
Which is, you're making my point.
There it is.
Which is, we hear this all the time, people want sidewalks. We don't have money to build sidewalks in a recurring budget because there are other priorities and they cost a lot. And what we basically have to tell citizens is, you're not getting a sidewalk. You just aren't. Unless you're in a place that's getting redeveloped and you get new infrastructure, you can want a sidewalk a lot, and some do for years. So this is why I say, if we're gonna say that the, that these are the kind of things that we can do with this money, I think we really need to be very intentional and, and do that. An emergency, all bets are off, happened in COVID, but the definition of emergency.
Yeah, I, I totally agree, and I just want to mention two things in response. First, if, if the federal government stops funding major things, we, the city of Knoxville does not have the resources to fill that breach. I mean, that's not our job, and also even if we wanted to, we couldn't. Secondly, I agree with you 100% that, A, we need to be specific, and B, we need to be accountable. So if you guys put this on the ballot, then we will start with a, you know, our webpage will show what the five-year plan is, and then if the people pass it, we will have a project tracker, that webpage for information will switch to a project tracker that's saying, year one, District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, what, what do we say we're gonna get done? When's the groundbreaking? When's the ribbon cutting? Is this a one-year project, a two-year project? And year two, year three, and then we show our progress. So we are, we want to be transparent, and we want to be something that the people of the city can be proud of. That they say, yes, I voted to increase the sales tax by half a cent because I trust our government, our city elected officials to do what they said they promised they would do. So absolutely.
And this is my last comment, because we can talk about this another time. But I do believe that some of the buckets you're talking about up there are the things only local government can do.
Exactly.
And I think that is a big delineation people need to understand. The state isn't gonna build us a sidewalk.
Nope.
Federal government's not gonna build us a sidewalk. Local taxes build sidewalks. They build, they do the traffic calming. There, there may be grants, but these are the, these are the basic services that citizens pay taxes for. So I'll be.
Councilwoman Singh.
Thank you. Couple of questions. Is Chris Davis still here?
He is.
There you are.
It's all yours.
Hi.
Sima, how are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
Couldn't be better.
A little bit of sunshine would be nice.
It would be nice, wouldn't it? Yeah.
What do you estimate the cost to be if the county decided that they wanted to implement this as well?
If the county wanted to?
Right.
I do not, I, I do not have an estimate of that at the moment. I have an estimate for the city. If the county chose to do this and do it in, in some type of applicable timeline close to this, we would piggyback, so to speak, on the city of Knoxville election, and therefore we'd be opening up 78 minus 36, 42 polling places, I think. Additionally, we'd be utilizing a heck of a lot more equipment, obviously. Probably increase the number of workers by 200% because it'd be a much bigger election. You're talking, you're easily talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. Is that 200? Is that 300? I don't have an exact number on that. Although you haven't yet asked, I will tell you, if the city proposes to put this on the ballot, it would probably, right now, I would think somewhere be in that additional $15,000 to $20,000 above and beyond what, I know that I had a conversation with Mr. Brace and Mr. Evans back in, could have been January, does that sound right? Something like that. So maybe $15,000 to $20,000 more. It could be a little bit more depending on variety of factors. But most of the big-ticket items would already kind of be taken care of by the fact that you're already paying for an election. So this will be more paper, workers, training, that type of thing.
Just the cost of a referendum.
Yeah, essentially.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Mayor, I've got a couple more questions.
I would just, I would just add, is it true, Mr. Davis, that this would give the 5th district residents something to vote on?
Absolutely.
So we would open any polling places in the 5th district, Mr. Thomas would get a chance to, to vote. We'd, just as another added bonus.
The $1,600, when you were talking about what the state limits us to.
Yeah.
Can you tell me more about that? Like, at what point do we, are we doing the 2-point, I mean, the?
Like, right now. Go back to that big circle with the, the sales tax. So right now, the sales tax is 7% goes to the state, and the 2.25 is the local option that stays here in Knoxville. If you buy something that costs more than $1,600, the whole, the whole amount of whatever you buy. You buy a $50,000 car. I've never bought a car that expensive, but I hear they exist. So if you buy a $50,000 car, you pay 7% sales tax on that whole thing.
Okay.
It's my understanding. But the 2.25%, you only pay on the first $1,600.
That's how it is right now.
They have imposed that cap on cities, but not on themselves.
That's pretty regressive. Okay. We would be, I'm talking about the items that would not be subject to this.
Let's go to that slide.
You said groceries, we would have to do an amendment or another agreement to include that in the?
Well, what I, what, what I plan to do is bring to you all in your June meetings two different types of ordinances. One is the ballot referendum. Do you, you know, the yes/no vote on this half-cent. And the other is an ordinance that would, if upon adoption, if the city voters approved that, groceries would be excluded from that half-cent increase. And you could adopt them both at the same time, so voters know that it's, it's already done. Like, and you don't have to wait to see who the next city council member's gonna be. It's done. And so it's, that's, that's how we would do it. Is that right, Cheryl? Okay.
So my concern would be about, I, I love that you're not, the diapers, the groceries, but menstrual care products, over-the-counter medications, that's a concern for me also. Can we include that in?
Well, we're using state definitions, and to depart from that would get really complicated and maybe even illegal. So I would, I'm doing the best I, making every effort to make this as less regressive. I understand that the impact is regressive. But I think knowing that groceries are not part of it, gas, rent, prescription drugs, and healthcare visits. But carving out things other than groceries, I don't think we, we don't have the authority to do that.
Hmm, okay. Really wish feminine hygiene. Can I, can you share a list with what counts as groceries with us at some point?
Yeah, I had that in my, Cheryl, do you have that? You wanna, what counts, what counts as groceries?
Like the state definition?
Yeah, I have that here somewhere.
Yeah, where can we find it so we could?
If you go to the city of, whoops, see if I can type. Oh, I have no internet. Great. If you go to the city's website where there is, I'm sorry, I didn't connect to the internet. If you go to the city's website where we have the local option page, there is a, there is a section, and it defines very specifically exactly what those items are. I was trying to pull that up.
And I, I have some answers for you, but you can, you know, go see the website yourself.
Okay.
Definition of groceries, raw meats, produce, dairy products, packaged snacks, beverages, frozen foods, not baking ingredients, condiments, spices, prepackaged, non-alcoholic beverages. So not alcohol, but other beverages. Your sodas, I guess, and date rates and.
My last question, promise, is the surrounding counties that bumped up to the 2.75?
Yeah.
Anderson, Blount, Granger, did they also exclude groceries?
No, they did not.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna be a leader in that regard. I almost called on you, but that's the vice mayor's job.
Councilmember Roberto, who is you?
I think, Councilmember Ryder, are you next?
I, it doesn't matter. I just was looking up while, Sima, I'm sorry, I have to be the librarian here. The, the state of Tennessee, they don't call it groceries, they call it food and food ingredients. So if you are Googling for that, it's food and food ingredients. There's another thing, they have a sheet, it's the state sales tax rate on food. But this is a sheet that's specific to the Improve Act, and I'm so sorry that I'm not up to speed as to whether that, that was something on the docket this year, maybe, or something? I don't know. Cheryl?
I don't know the answer to that, but that is, the, the exact language from
the state of Tennessee is on the city's website.
It's already on the web.
If you go to the local option website, it specifically tells, we just pulled the exact language.
Okay.
And it is, and, and you're correct, it is food and food ingredients.
Yeah.
You're correct. And it names the same list that the mayor just.
Okay, yeah. So, well, I still have some time, right? Well, you're not timing me. I can just go all day. Just kidding, just kidding.
We're timing.
Word the clock. When did these other states, I guess, and we don't have to do the answer tonight if we don't have states, counties, when did the other counties do the local option sales tax? You already told us that?
Um, yeah, I have that exact, let's see, Granger County was 1994.
Okay, sorry.
Anderson County was 2006, Jefferson County was 2008, Sevier County was 2009, Blount County was 2014. So they were all at least 10 years ago. Granger County was 30 years ago.
And these were ballot referendums?
Mm-hmm. They, they had to comply with the same state law, so they got it passed in those counties. So I think we could do it here, too.
Okay. And that, those dates are also on the local option.
Has Union County never put it on the ballot?
I don't know.
Okay, okay.
But also on the webpage, we have a map of the state of Tennessee. And you'll see it's, it's predominantly orange, and not just because we all love UT, but because a lot of communities across the state have already gone to the maximum local option sales tax.
It might be our first-choice color, I'm just saying. All right, thanks.
This is our Lady Valls colors. We sort of made that, you know.
Just real quick, I have a question. Mayor, you mentioned what would be on the ballot. You made a distinction between the actual language and the rate and the list of specifics that we might provide detail for of the projects, the sidewalks, et cetera, that are gonna get fixed. That list cannot go on the ballot, is that what I heard?
Yes. You know, I would love it to be on the ballot, be like, vote yes for more parks and sidewalks. But the lawyers tell me that we have to be very specific about what the ballot language can contain, and I'm sure Chris Davis can elaborate as well. But it's gonna be as simple as it can be, but it will not say, it'll just be like one sentence saying, do, shall, we have to use the word shall, and you have to say, shall we move the sales tax up by half a cent? Point five, and you have to use the numbers and the words. So it's not gonna be as plain English as I would like, but we're trying to keep it as plain and simple as the law allows.
I'd say it'll be a little easier than voting district changes language, but.
It's definitely gonna be easier.
Mr. Davis, would you add anything to the, Matt?
No, the, the, excuse me. The only, only thing I would add is, and I believe I've shared this with Mr. Swanson, is that when you, a couple of things that come to mind, and I believe he can either refute or confirm what I'm saying, is the ballot question has to be 300 words or less, I believe. And number two, the response will have to be for or against, as opposed to yes or no. Beyond that, I think the language is.
We can't have you have to know?
No, I think it's for, for against. Yep. So, but other than that, I think the, the language is essentially left up to the people who write the ordinance, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Davis while we have him?
No, Mr. Davis.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm gonna allow Councilwoman Ryder to hop in, then if that's okay.
I mean, unless you guys have one.
No minds for the mayor.
Okay. Mr. Davis, since you, you need to depart from our presence. So the, I was not here when this happened in Knox County, but, so Knox County passed the wheel tax at some point?
I'll say yes. Yes, I pay it, so I'm assuming we did, yes.
In, in the 90s, I believe.
I believe.
No, early 2000s, early 2000s. It was under Ragsdale, sorry.
I was thinking it was under the administration of Mike Rags.
It was, I'm sorry, early 2000s.
And it may have had something to do with, it may have been promises of libraries or something to that effect. I may, I may be wrong, I'm going off.
No, you are correct.
We're going off the tracks here. Councilwoman Ryder.
Okay, so I, okay, so, Mr. Davis, I guess because that was prior to your time at the helm, you don't remember exactly the wording of that. I'm just curious. We're talking about. about the wording of this one?
No, I mean, I certainly, we could certainly provide the wording of the wheel tax question.
I'm just super curious, because the wheel tax was passed with the promise of it being for a very specific thing that has never happened, and has never sunset, and is still collected. And I really became aware of that, because people came to my campaign events and were asking me about it, thinking that it was the city, because a lot of people don't discern between city and county. So I would be curious, and I can look that up, staff can get that for us, but I'm curious. Just because of the conversation about here, we can't tie it to a specific, so I guess based on that, maybe I'm to assume the wheel tax probably on the ballot didn't tie it to the libraries, that was just part of the conversation, ergo...
Could not say, but I can certainly provide that language to Mr. Johnson or Mr. Smith, or anyone else.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for Mr. Davis. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. We appreciate your time. Okay. Careful what you wish for. Councilman Roberto?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor, what I've kind of heard tonight is, really, I guess we can boil it down to maybe like three different words. So, one was listening, and you talked about that when you were talking about the developing the specific projects that we were talking about earlier. The other one was transparency, which is the specific list that's published, so everyone knows what they are. And then, we've touched on the accountability piece, which would be the third one, which, what I was hearing from the discussion earlier was that, you know, there will be some kind of mechanism to ensure that what people are saying "I'm for" on the ballot will be the things that we're using the money to support. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. And then I'm also glad that we've got this image up on the screen. So, one of the things that I was thinking about, let's just take greenways and road paving. So, I know we had a greenway corridor study, and I can't remember what the total amount was for maybe connecting all the greenways, but I'd want to look at that again, and I don't have it in front of me right now, but that might be a good place for us to go back to and look at.
Yes.
But here we got, you know, $12 million on there. What I'm suggesting is that I think we should break things up, because, you know, we've got greenways, you know, we want to be able to talk about what specific things we're gonna do with the greenways, obviously. But then with road paving, and we've got 1,200 miles of roadway, and we do about $10 million a year now, which is about 36 miles. I mean, if you doubled that, that'd be $20 million, so you could do 72 miles.
Right.
That might be something that people want, in the listening phase, right, that might be something people want to hear, is, hey, instead of paving your street once every 20 years, we're gonna pave it once every 10. And that might be more, you know, tied into the lifespan of the road, the roads that we're building. So, I do think breaking those up would be a good idea. The same thing with sidewalks and traffic calming, we talked about it. You know, the rule of thumb is that sidewalks cost a million dollars a mile. What we find is that as you actually do the projects, it doesn't cost quite that much. It's more of like a placeholder, so you don't, you don't, you have enough funds to deal with it. But it can cost less than that, for sure. But traffic calming, you'd spend less than you would for sidewalks. So, I don't, I think we need to break these things up a little bit, and then make sure that we're listening to what people's priorities are, like we talked about, to focus in on those specific things.
I totally agree. And again, you know, even if this is approved to put on the ballot by you guys and then approved by the voters, you know, we had 70 million of unmet needs just this year, so, you know, that's, yeah, we do need to be specific, and by district, so people know what they're voting for. I have from Mr. Swanson, the draft language of the ballot, I can read it out, which, you know, this is the first, I've seen it in exactly this form, so, would you like me to read it?
Sure.
And then, obviously, we'll put this in writing, you know, we just, literally, it's first I've seen it. This one right here? Shall, this one?
Yes.
Okay. Shall the 2.1/4%, and then parentheses, 2.25%, local option sales tax rate currently levied throughout Knox County be increased by 2.3/4%, parentheses, 2.75%, in the city of Knoxville? And then, for or against? I wish it could be yes or no, but apparently it has to be for or against. So it's one sentence, I'll read it again. Shall the 2.1/4% local option sales tax rate currently levied throughout Knox County be increased to 2.3/4% in the city of Knoxville? For or against?
And I can tell you that Mr. Mametoff and I went back together, and we have a longer version of this question, that is a little more complicated, but we went to the statute, and we tried to figure out, from looking at the requirements in the statute, what's the simplest question we can ask, that people will understand as they go into the booth to mark their ballot. Reading that statute, what's the simplest question we can ask, even though we have to have a for and against, we still wanted it to have a very simple question. And so, we've got a couple more versions of that question. For example, shall the ordinance passed by the city of Knoxville on June 24 or 25 that increases the local option sales tax rate collected in that portion of Knox County that is within the city of Knoxville, from 2.1/4% currently levied to 2.3/4% become operative? Yeah. So, we tried to take the lawyer language out of it, all we could, and that's what we ended up with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Thomas?
Thank you, Charles, Mr. Swanson.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes, Councilperson Roberto actually asked one of my questions, and I also did have questions about the greenway and road paving. And greenways may fit better into the category, excuse me, sidewalks and traffic calming, you know, possibly. So, not to repeat everything he just said, I may want to take another look at that, about throwing greenways in, which is more pedestrian-oriented with road paving, which is more automobile traffic, but...
Well, as we discussed, our plan is to not have, you know, these buckets will be gone, and take, and instead of the buckets, will be a specific five-year plan by district. And then the things that are citywide will be things like affordable housing and traffic calming, because, again, we can't predict exactly where those investments will be. But the other things will be very site-specific. And so, we'll say, this greenway, this park, and then roads, it might instead of be, instead of specific roads, it might be, instead of X number of miles per district per year, it'll be more miles or more frequent, we have to, you know, those are things, Mr. Claybo, with engineering, who's not, he's not in town this week, but he's getting some calculations over how we could best use this. If we have this pot of money, how much more paving could we do? And that's what I want and need and welcome, your input about these trade-offs. I mean, we could put it all on sidewalks, and then we could just put it 100% on sidewalks. I think that a diversity of investments is probably, you know, more appealing to a wider range of people. But, you know, these amounts are just in draft form, and please come meet with me and my team to let me know your thoughts on specific projects and priorities.
Yeah, the, you know, the categories are somewhat subjective. I mean, you could argue that greenways and roads are similar, and that they move people, so. I do realize there's subjectivity, but I do think that should be kind of looked at a little bit more, and I think the public would be more clear on what they were voting for, if they, maybe the road paving and greenways weren't lumped together, but?
Yeah.
Look at that.
Okay.
This is really mainly for clarification, I think, regarding the grocery tax. What would be exempted from taxing groceries would just be the half-cent bump, right?
Right. We can't, we cannot reduce the existing tax, because those, the current tax is adopted by Knox County. We don't have any authority to change the existing.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the public understood that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good question.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Thank you. And I've, while we've been talking, I did go out and pull the state definition of groceries. So some people are gonna be shocked to see that candy is not considered a grocery.
What?
So, just to put everybody on notice now. But also, what I wanted to talk about briefly on the buckets, there are some buckets there, that there are some people across the city who may not see an importance of a few of those things. I believe that affordable housing is one that everyone would be agreeable, as it relates to. There are some people who may not see a sense of urgency on maybe greenways or facilities, because not having a really good understanding of that. And I believe this is where it's incumbent upon us to inform and educate people in our districts about what this is and what it isn't, and to get their feedback as well. Did want, a point of clarification, not that I'm defending anyone, but when we talked about the wheel tax, Councilwoman Ryder, so that was, the wheel tax was proposed in the early 2000s, 2003, 6% tax, and 2004, a four, and it was designed ultimately to avoid raising property taxes in the county. And it was to provide dedicated funding for the Knox County Public Library and overall county infrastructure and service needs. So whether or not that was fully achieved or not, but we do know the one thing that was achieved is that the county has not raised taxes for a very, very long time. So, again, that's not to compare, I just wanted to put that out there. That was the intent behind what he did, when he did that. But at the end of the day, I do think that this is an opportunity, and one that I would, I'd like to see our constituents across the city of Knoxville be able to make the decision, rather than council members. One other question to you, someone out here may or may not know the answer. When we talked about the increase of people that are moving into our city, and we know that we've seen at least 10,000-plus, do we have projections for the next five to 10 years?
Knoxville Knox County Planning just put out an update very recently on all kinds of demographic, you know, where we are now and where we will be as far as increased housing and population, and also the age and demographics of that population, age, income, so forth. So, that's, we can send you a link to that. It's right now, we are, you know, growing, and I think that's expected to continue for several, a couple decades. But I can't remember off the top of my head. But we'll send that link, I just looked at it this morning, it's really well done, and we'll share that with you, and put it up on, you know, just, we'll share that with you, and if you have any follow-up questions, we can try to answer those, too.
Absolutely. Look forward to meeting with you and your staff about this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Helsley?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Oh, color me devastated that we don't get, ever get new sidewalks, Mr. Brace. I did not know that. So, like, never ask, is that what you're saying? You did. You said unless it's part of a project, so?
Well, Texas Avenue and Atlantic Avenue are two brand-new sidewalks, so we do them, but it's expensive.
I thought you said you didn't do new sidewalks.
That was me being hyperbolic, saying you don't get them.
No, he said that as part of a project. Did he not say that? Really? Okay, well, I was devastated, so, okay, we'll quit asking for sidewalks. I want to throw another wrench, and, well, this is actually just a, to council. I have read repeatedly where cities like, like, set aside a bucket of money, however, whatever it may be, a million dollars, make it up, to each council district? Because we're always looking to get the community involved in government, but we never seem to be able to do that, except when we get yelled at sometimes. So, if each district had some money to work on a project, then the community could get involved, and everybody could decide how that money was being spent, and I think that's a great idea, and something we maybe should think about. Thank you.
Okay, good, good suggestion.
Councilmember Ryder?
Okay, so, I just want to, I think this is important, to publicly talk about, the other night in the council meeting, we passed the capital improvements budget, and I made a statement just for the sake of getting it aired, which was, when we pass the capital improvements plan, which covers, is it cover five or 10 years? Five?
I believe, including the current year.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Mr. Evans, five?
I think it's six, including the current.
Okay, okay, six, six. But the question that I said to you, when I turned my light on then, was, or the statement was, this is what we're covering, not what we're not covering.
Correct.
And I think that's what's important, is sometimes constituents will say, I don't agree that you put this as a capital, I don't, I don't agree that you're funding this. But then people want you to fund other things, and then lots of people want to know why something else isn't in the plan. And I think the thing that doesn't get a lot of bandwidth is all the things that we're not funding. So let's say, just as an example for conversations, because we've had to do things as an, on an emergency, and Councilwoman Fugge says we have emergency funding, is, we'll have, like, HVAC equipment go out at, let's say, the Coliseum, right? We have ongoing maintenance of things that we defer and push down the road. Our parks, we have a lot of parks where our equipment will wear out, because we can't take preemptive maintenance and replace playground equipment, because we don't have enough money to replace, that is correct, right? We do not have enough money to update and repair playground equipment at all 92 parks across the city. We don't bring in enough revenues in our tax coffers to cover all the things that we need at all our facilities and all of our parks. So every year, we have to make hard decisions about what's not gonna get updated. What are we gonna try and get a little more life out of, and a little more juice out of? And that's the thing that some people don't see, because they see something shiny and new somewhere here, but they don't see all the things that we didn't fund, or we kicked the can down the road, or we squeezed a little bit more out of that washcloth, you know, wrang a little bit more out of something, because we just can't afford to do that. So what happens is, for example, in a park in my district, it's, I believe, a swing or something broke or was dangerous, and then it's tell the neighborhood, hey, by the way, we had to take your swings, because we've got to fix them, versus, hey, we know in the next three years, these have reached their life cycle, and it's time to replace them. So we don't have, like, a replacement plan going, we have a, well, we have to deal with this now, because we're out of it, right?
Yeah, well, we do try to have some reserve funds for replacement. I think we do that for fleet, and, you know, that sort of thing, but we don't do it for as many...
We do that for fire trucks, we do that.
The facilities and maintenance budget, I mean, that's, you know, the least sexy of those buckets. You know, people call us all the time and say we need more housing, sidewalks, greenways. No one calls and says, we need a new chiller in this community center. No one says that, and yet...
No one in Fountain City has asked for new sewer lines to those toilets, but I found out last week, we did it.
A lot of these invisible things are super important to the quality of life of the, of our city, so that's why we put that in there as one of the buckets.
Okay. And Councilwoman Helsley, I'll just comment back to you. I don't know what Mr. Brace said, I'm not gonna throw him under the bus or raise him up, but I think in past budgets, many of them, it was a million dollars for sidewalks in some of the budgets, a million dollars annually. I don't know. I know there were years it was like a million.
Yeah.
And it's about a million per mile, and each district would get some short stint. I know, like, in my district, one year it was Coker, there was sidewalk stretch along Old Broadway. So, you know, like, I have the fourth district sidewalk plan here, which is the sidewalk study, which I've heard the number in the past, after we did the sidewalk study, was the cost to do all the purple is like a billion dollars. At the time, we did the sidewalk study.
Yeah, I think, let me clarify what I said. So, we have very, very limited dollars to do new sidewalks that aren't part of a major infrastructure overhaul, like the Burlington streetscapes, Sevier Avenue streetscapes, Cumberland Avenue. And you're right, the sidewalk plan was getting into the Bs, the billions, to try to build that out. So we had limited resources, we would try to get those dollars. Like, what we did over in Councilman Thomas's district was multiple budgets ago, you know, by the time we designed it and we buy right away, we really don't have the ability regularly to fund new sidewalk sections. Had a large sidewalk section over in West Hills very early in this administration. So, but to really build out sidewalks, that's what this program, it's one of the number-one things that we hear, you know, as listening to community members. And again, we need your feedback to see what you're hearing, but very limited dollars. We do a good job of repairing sidewalks. Every single year, we budget those dollars, mainly because it's a risk issue. We've got to keep those up in an ADA issue.
Okay. I'll let somebody else speak. Thanks. Thanks.
Mayor, is it fair to say that, you know, well, let me start by saying, oh, I've, five years and some change, I've heard all of these requests from residents every year. And, you know, one of my biggest disappointments was learning how few sidewalks I was going to get to help engineer. But what I hear you saying in all of this is, we can do this in five years or two decades. And I think, to me, that's the biggest value, when I think about quality-of-life requests from constituents, is, I don't want to be on a list that my grandkids get to walk on, I want a list that I can walk on, or sidewalk, that is. And regarding the specificity of these, you know, I think we all have things come to mind that, you know, we've been waiting on, or wanting, or just, you know, I, I have a list of things in every neighborhood in South Knoxville, that I, in Fort Sanders, that I can say, "Yep, I guarantee you that neighborhood would be willing to contribute for that," or, or sign on for this. Affordable housing one for me is a little, you know, our housing strategy involves all kinds of permanent supportive housing, investments in, to, to help developers build more housing. It includes Affordable Housing Fund, and so, I would like to hear, at some point, some specificity around things we can do with that bucket that we can't do today, in addition to just more.
Yeah. Well, I, I think all of these buckets are things we're already doing, and so, it would be addressing the needs, again, like you said, in five years instead of 20-plus years.
Yeah.
And, and the housing proposal is because we are in a housing crisis, and, you know, maybe if we put more money in now, it'll address the crisis sooner, and then, in years, in the future, instead of, you know, having that much in affordable housing, we can divert it to sidewalks, or greenways, or paving. But the housing crisis has not abated, it's, seems to be getting slightly better, rents have not continued to increase at the same pace, but we still have an acute issue, as you all well know. But, but yeah, we can talk more specifically about the affordable housing. You know, again, one thing I think that's super important is the way we address the shortage of housing, is to build more housing, and the people who can do that best is private developers, and the way we keep it affordable is to provide that gap financing, where, again, we put in $1, and the private sector contributes 15 on average. So, that's been really successful, and, you know, I, I would anticipate this contribution to affordable housing going towards gap financing, but also some of the other strategies, like we, we just included in the budget last time, you know, acquiring blighted property, homemakers, permanent supportive housing, and emergency solutions for housing as well. But, yeah, these are all good questions, and, and also, I just want to say, you know, you know, we could just do nothing, and just like have these 20, 30-year plans. We have a sidewalk plan, we have a greenways plan, we have all these plans that have been put together by a lot of community input, and then, after that work is done, we just make such incremental progress, it's a little discouraging. So to me, this is a bold plan, it's responsive to the needs of our community, and I, I hope that as we get into the specifics, that you all will embrace it, and, and vote to let the voters decide in November.
One other comment, this, you know, you're mayor for three more years?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. Even if we offer some feedback, the community weighs in, you come up with a specific list of, of specific sidewalks, neighborhoods, parks, things where you want to invest, the implementation of that will outlive your tenure.
Well, I'll have the pleasure of getting it off to a great start, and to start that tracking, and hopefully establish the accountability so robustly that whoever succeeds me will just be, you know, asked while they campaign, "Are you going to keep this promise or not?" And if they say no, they wouldn't win. That would be my hope.
Okay. I, I would, I would like to continue dialogue about other, other ways, in addition to that, we can, we can have accountability for the priorities that make their way up to the conversation now, when the decision is being made. Stick, I think, as, as accountable and sticky as we can make that, I would, I would encourage that. So more dialogue on that, I think. Any other, Councilmember Thomas?
Yeah, just a, a general comment, is that another way to increase tax revenue, of course, is to convert blighted property and increase the tax base. And we're, I want to acknowledge that we're doing some of that, but the, the more we do of that, the less we're going to have to come back and ask for tax increases, et cetera. So, I do want to, to acknowledge the, the progress that's being made on that, but the more blighted property and underused property that we can convert, get back on the tax roll, and use that for revenue, the better off we are. So, thank you.
Absolutely, yep.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, and one of the most consistent things I hear is that blighted properties obviously don't contribute anything to the quality of life or to the revenue of the city, and I think, we, I don't think state law allows us to do some things, or gives us many tools to incentivize redevelopment, but we do have some, and I think...
Well, you all just approved the Magnolia Avenue redevelopment corridor two days ago, and so, we have more tools in the East Knoxville area. That's really exciting, so, thank you, and I think we can continue to get the word out. We can, we could set the table, but we can't force the issue, but I think that's a really positive step for the Magnolia Avenue corridor.
Any other questions? If not, seeing none, thank you, Mayor, thank you for your team and the work that's gone into this. We will open the floor over the next few weeks to residents and constituents to talk to us, and talk to you, and tell us what they think. So, thank you.
Thank you.
[music]